Good evening.
I'm Dave.
Good evening.
We'll call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissions to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. There's no one here from the Mineral Sterile Association. Let's stand. I believe this in our prayer. Followed by a plea to believe.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you now for allowance to come. We thank you for your hand in all that we do. We thank you for your guidance to this point as we consider the budget adoption, all those things that are part of that process. Thank you for these persons giving their time and talent to make Liberty County a better place. We ask you now that you would bless our leaders. We ask you to bless Commissioner Walden and his family. Bless other families who may be going through special prayers. The family who graduated from Bradwell, who went home to a fire at the graduation just the other day. And I know there are other students who were lost too. So our prayers for strength for their families. Blessed as we move forward to do what is pleasing in our sight. Give us ever-loving care and guidance. Bless the sick and the shut-in, mankind everywhere. Do that with careful forgiveness. All the almighty praises. Christ save me free. Amen.
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 Praise the Lord to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America and to the republic which it stands.
You're gonna always have a little lag, Commissioner Walden. Should've kept on. You were coming through loud and clear.
Just as a note too, I guess since we're reporting now too, that Commissioner Walden is attending by phone.
Glad to have you. Thanks, sir. All right. Approval of the minutes for the month of May. There are two sets of meetings that will require our approval, May 4th and May 20th.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes for my May 4th and May 20th meeting.
Motion second. We approve the meetings for May 4th and May 20th. Any necessary corrections? Is that being in discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those are polls. All right. Thank you, sir. Public hearing fiscal year 2022. Ms. Kim McGlothlin, we are to this point.
We are to this point.
To this point.
If we can, Ms. Chairman, if we can, just make a motion a second even though there's no one.
Oh.
And that's just going to.
Even though there's, okay. Are we going to entertain questions?
We are. We're gonna monitor on Facebook.
Facebook, okay.
A post out there to ask people to watch and submit their questions.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, you can chat your questions. Put them in chat box and we'll try to answer those if any. Chair, ten motion to go out of regular session in the public hearing for budget hearing.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're not in the public hearing for the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are here today to discuss your proposed fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. We've worked hard on this for the past couple of months. We've worked very long days trying to whittle away at what we hope will be your final budget. Now, the adoption is actually June 17th. So even though we're proposing and we're showing you the recommended budget, you can still make changes before the final adoption on the 17th. So I just remind everybody of that. So let's take a look at where we started. Your original budget request came in at over $50 million. We worked and worked and made about nine point, almost 9.6 million worth of cuts to land at a proposed general fund budget of a little more than $41 million. It's scary because when I first started here in 2002, I think our general fund budget was around 12 million. So we are now up over 40 million for our general fund budget. That's how much this county has grown.
Grown.
Again, your proposed budget is 41 million. Your current budget for this year is 38.8 million. That does include the $3.1 million amendment that you did at your last May mid-month meeting. So that's how we came up to the 38.8. So your budget increase is about 5.66% for almost $2.2 million increase. Let's look at the revenues collectively. We've grouped these together, but if you have any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Of course, you see the largest area is in general property taxes. Your local option sales tax continues to do phenomenal. I looked at lost and T, or splosted and T-splosted again, coming in at over what we budgeted, so they're holding steady. Couple of your other revenues, one that went down significantly is your intergovernmental revenues, and that's only because this year included the CARES money, which was a little over a million. So that's why you see that big drop in that particular line item. Because the million dollars that we received from the CARES Act is included in this year's intergovernmental revenue. Your other financing sources dropped some. It actually dropped.
Question.
Thank you.
It, because we have taken the recreation department, which normally includes about a $1.4 million operating transfer. We've taken all of recreation and we've put that into the general fund. So you will no longer have an operating transfer out to recreation. They will operate, we will receive revenues into the general fund and all expenses will be recorded in the general fund. So your other financing sources decreased because we no longer have that operating transfer out. Just to kind of look, sometimes I think a picture speaks volumes. And so you can see your property taxes is basically your meat and potatoes of your. This is your largest revenue line item. Your next largest is your sales and use tax, your local option sales tax, then your charges for services, and then your fines and forfeitures. Those are your four largest revenue line items. So I just wanted to highlight those for you.
Good slide, Kim.
What's that?
That's a good slide.
Here's another one that kind of trends your most significant revenue. And you can see from 2012, where we had about 14 million in property taxes, going all the way up to what we project to end up at 24 million. Almost 24 million at the end of this, at the end of June. So you can see how property taxes have grown. And that's good for us because that is the largest line item. Your next line items, your next three that I talked about, you can kind of see have done various things. This is your local option sales tax. And you can kind of see when the economy went down, but then you can see from, basically from 18 on up, it continues to grow. And I really think one of the largest impacts was the online sales because that has just helped tremendously across the board. You see your charges for service fluctuate a little bit. Your fines and forfeitures, they were up, they came down, and now they're heading back up in the right direction. We hope to see those continue to grow. When we look at expenditures, as you would expect, salaries and wages are your largest line item. As I've mentioned before, your employees are your largest asset. That is your biggest expense and it is your most valuable asset. We can see too, there are a couple of other things. Capital outlay decreased because we identified very little capital to put out. And the capital that we do have in the budget is going to be funded through the use of fund balance. And there's about 748,000 in capital that we intend to use fund balance for because that is a one-time purchase, not a recurring line item. Your other financing uses, again, that is the operating transfer out that would have normally gone to the recreation. So that's not going to the recreation anymore. The other thing also, one reason that it dropped, is we had transferred out this year close to 600,000 for that fire station alone that the general fund received and then transferred out to sales tax to help with the building of that fire station. Here's another way to look at some of those expenses, just so that you can kind of see where those expenses fall within a function. So your public safety, of course, is your largest area, making up 44% of your budget. So public and safety includes all of your sheriff's departments, from your sheriff, your jail, your narcotics, your detectives, your school resource officer, your Flemington law, your law enforcement training. It also includes departments, your new fire department that you stood up this year, emergency management, your coroner, animal control. Those are all considered public safety departments. Of course, your next highest one is your general government. And those are gonna be all of your departments, the commissioners, the tax commissioner, the assessors office, admin and finance, data processing. All of those are considered general government. And then, of course, your judicial, which is all of your courts, your state court, your state court judge, your superior court, your clerk of court, your probate court, your magistrate court, your juvenile court. When you look at the types of services that we have, there are those that are mandated by law. And those mandated services total about $25 million. They make up 61% of your budget. So 25 million of your $41 million budget is mandated services. And as we know, some of those mandated services, they don't come with revenues. We've discussed that before. Then you've got essential services at about 15 million and discretionary services at about 883,000. I will tell you, you know, there could be some difference of opinion between essential and discretionary. Mandated is clear. It's black and white. But when you get into essential and discretionary, you might have differing views. For a long time, we considered fire to be discretionary. In the last couple of years, we have made that an essential service. So here are those services. And you can see some of those services that are, well, all of the services are mandated. Then you can see what we classify as essential and then discretionary. In this budget, there are some additional personnel and their benefits. We've got areas, general government, judicial, public safety, public works. And then there is money in there for longevity and for potential merit to be distributed after half a year, again, after successful evaluation is done. And as I mentioned before, here are the capital items that will be approved. And again, they are going to be covered by the use of fund balance. Couple of issues to remember when you consider your '22 budget is to continue to fulfill your obligation for countywide fire services. You started that process. You wanted to finish it. We put on 18 full-time firefighters. This budget includes an additional 18 firefighters that will be hired staggered the same way we did this year. There will be a transition of EMS operations to a county function. Right now, EMS is under the umbrella of the hospital authority. They will move over and become a county department and fall under your guidance. We will continue to monitor all of the general fund revenues. And then we will also consider the use of the American Rescue Plan funds, which we are still learning about. I just watched another webinar last week about the potential uses and things to stay away from and things to try and plan for. Then your digest growth, the real growth versus the reassessed growth. Whenever you have reassessed growth, then you have to determine, are you gonna roll the millage rate back? Are you gonna keep that reassessed growth? How much real growth will there be versus the reassessed growth? And just to know that these budget recommendations are based on our best estimates at this point in time and that once the digest is available for review, you may need to come back and do some revisions, as you have in the past. And then finally, we will continue to monitor the expenditures and adhere to your fund balance policy and your budget policy. We'll continue to pursue cost reduction initiatives anytime we're able to, eliminating overtime if we have to, monitoring contracts for the most cost-effective arrangements. These are all things that we normally do anyway. We will continue to do. And I'll remind you again, your fund balance policy says to maintain a fund balance within three to seven months' worth of operational, undesignated, unreserved fund balance. Three to seven months' worth of operational expenditures. You've been able to do that ever since we've implemented that policy, which allows us to use it for things like capital, one-time purchase capital. When you have a healthy fund balance that starts to grow, you do need to use it. You don't need to build it up so high. So this is a great way to use it, is a one-time purchase. And that's all I have unless somebody has specific questions or comments that I can answer.
If you will, please, Commissioner Jones is new here. Talk about the, what's the word I want to use? Rolling back.
So whenever you have reassessed growth, basically what that's saying is the value of your property has increased. So if you were to take the same millage rate that you had last year and apply it to a newer, higher value, reassessed value, you're going to generate more tax revenue, even if you keep the millage rate the same. So what the, what the law says is that you have to roll that millage rate back equivalent to the amount of that tax increase unless you advertise a millage increase and hold three public hearings and talk about how that impacts your revenue and why you're keeping, even though you're not increasing the millage rate itself, why you have to hold those public hearings. Because if you have reassessed growth and you apply the same millage rate, you're going to generate more tax revenue. So if you're gonna do that, you have to advertise it as a tax increase and you have to give the public time to input their comments and questions about that.
And that can be difficult to explain, my brother.
It can.
It's challenging to explain.
It can.
And then, I'm reminding, another part of that is as commissioners, then we, that's a tool that we have that we can use, but you have to be careful and look at the big picture of your budget because you don't want to, as Kim said, have a detrimental effect on your fund balance so that when you need something, you don't have funds to get it. But you have, but you use your bragging right, well, we rolled it back. We rolled it back. And then in the budget, you don't have funds to do some things you need to do. So, you know, you'll be careful how you use that, careful how you use that. It's a good tool, but.
Right. And it is hard to understand. It's hard to explain to somebody, well, we're not increasing the millage. We're holding the millage the same. Millage is gonna be the same. But yes, you're probably gonna pay more taxes if your house increased in value, if the assessed value increased. So.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Kim, Clint, could you go back to the list of the discretion right there? Where is recreation on there? Okay, it's essential. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any questions for Ms. McGlothlin? Am I sure we getting anything from our Facebook viewers? No?
Lot of things.
You must did outstanding.
Restful clear.
You did a good job.
Restful clear. All right, as you said, we have one more opportunity to look at it before we adopt it. I'm not sure if anybody stopped by the office to look at the information.
I honestly wouldn't know. I'm stuck back in my corner and I, if they've come and previewed it, they've done it in the front office.
Opportunity is still there. They need to do that between now and a mid-month meeting, I can.
Right.
Mission, everybody's good?
That budget's actually also online.
Online, okay.
You can, you can see the budget document online as well.
High of technology.
Well, Joey, do we need to go back and correct those minutes?
I was gonna bring that up after we finished.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Chair, ten motion to come out of public hearing, back in the regular session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? All right, back in the regular session.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Discover something in the minutes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, he, and I apologize because it was actually on the May 20th meeting, when you considered budget amendment 01, 2021. It reflects that the board unanimously.
Oh, no.
Budget amendment.
He did. He did.
Right, okay.
All right, all right.
Need a motion to make that?
A motion to accept the amendment to the minutes reflect correction.
Okay.
You gonna make that motion, sir?
Yes.
So move, Ms. Chairman.
Were you second?
Second.
Motion second. We make that amendment to the, to the minutes. That's noted by our county administrator. All in favor?
Say aye, Eddie.
Aye.
All right.
You know what, Gary, you got him crying.
Ordinance amendment 30-7.
Mr. Earl.
Hello, sir.
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
I think everyone has a copy of the ordinance before them. But in response to some dangerous ATV activity in county parks, the Recreation Department asks that we present this ordinance to you, which effectively prohibits the use of motor vehicles of any kind, whether it's truck, car, ATV, tractor, motorcycle, you name it, in county parks unless it's within driveways or parking areas approved for motor vehicles or unless it's otherwise expressly approved by the Recreation Department. Say, for example, in connection with a car show or something of that kind. But the ordinance before you is fairly simple. Again, it just prohibits the unauthorized use of any motor vehicle in county parks. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And some of you may know about the incidences I'm talking about. But, you know, I think particularly in the Flemington area, in those parks, there's been some dangerous ATV activity.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Was there an issue one time about this type of vehicles being in, like on county roads as well?
There was. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have an ordinance for that?
There's no ordinance. I mean, you could have authorized limited use of ATVs on county roads, but the absence of an ordinance authorizing it, it's prohibited. So.
Well, I was thinking, you know, when you talk about the parks and one of the parks in my district is, is the park in Homestown. And I'm just trying to think, it's some, behind the basketball court toward the ditch, there's some, kind of like an open area. And then behind the, what to the, if you're facing the pavilion from the road to the right of the pavilion, there's a kind of an open area over there. And I guess to enforce that, you would have to know the boundaries of the park. It's not fenced in. I mean, you know, we got a, I think it's two ramps. There's one down beyond the basketball court and there's one right there by the pavilion. But the area of the park, I mean, it's got the basketball court, it's got the pavilion, it's got the fine playground area with landscape tempers around it. But it's kind of open. And, you know, they ride, I see them riding four-wheelers on the road down there. So that would mean that a guy ride his four-wheeler to the park, he can't even park it over there by the basketball court. Yeah, I mean, he can't even take it on there according to this. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if the vehicle's licensed for, you know, public street transportation, it could be. I guess some off-road vehicles are even authorized for street purposes, but generally ATVs wouldn't be allowed. You're right.
Okay.
And again, it only applies to county parks or areas owned or operated by the county for recreation purposes. Doesn't have anything to do with public rights of way as of now. Of course, enforcement's another issue. You know, I think probably the Recreation Department anticipates posting signs prohibiting the use. Then if, you know, there's anyone who violates it, if there's an obvious violation, they'll probably take some measures.
Yeah, I mean, you know, James Brown Park, I mean, you know, you got the entrance off Patriots and the entrance off Tupelo. And even though it's not a fenced-in park, it is pretty well-defined that once you get off of those, I think Patriots is a county road, Tupelo up to the bridge is a city street. But inside of that, you know, once you cross that canal, in essence, you're in the park. And the park is bordered around the back by the track. So you shouldn't have a four-wheeler-type vehicle anywhere in there. You know, that's kind of defined. But I think some of the other parks are kind of, kind of open.
They are. Yes, sir.
I mean, Miller Park, you know, Miller Park has a road that goes beside it up between the park and the.
The convenience center?
The convenience center.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, okay.
But you're right, it requires some signage at the very least.
I think that's their, that's their plan, yes, at least with respect to the parts that present the most danger right now.
So tell me this, so we're, the county has that liability if someone get hurt or hurt someone on our property with one of these vehicles?
No, that's one of the other benefits of prohibiting it as well. You know, if you, if you allow that sort of use, especially if it's expressly authorized, you may have some liability, but I doubt it. In these situations, no. I mean, sovereign immunity would protect you. But it's just one further step to insulate yourself from liability. And criticism, you know, I can anticipate some parents if their child were injured by riding an ATV in a county park, they would have maybe some questions with the county as to why it wasn't in a safer.
You know how we get those things that come, they sue everybody and their grandmother.
Yes. But no, you wouldn't have any liability.
Well, you know, I have seen, and, you know, the public, they do seem to abide by the dog, you know, no dogs at the park and I think of smoking as well. I mean, I, you know, when, the times I do go down there, I don't see people down there. I see more dogs in restaurants than I have at the baseball field.
And you're right. I think this is a problem with parks that are more open and probably outside the Hinesville city limits, but a problem to my understanding.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, and I understand the need for the ordinance and why we coming up with it. But from the viewpoint, the standpoint of a responsible ATV owner, we sort of, those that are responsible sort of appreciate the areas, extra areas that we have to ride because it's limited access that we have to ride. You know, these, especially the off-road ATVs, you can't ride them on the highway. You sort of limit it to the shoulders of the road or the highway. And now we taking away the parks. And that's all the limits of our access to riding, you know, to recreation. The reason for it, I understand, but it just sort of limits where we can ride. And I was wondering if we even gave that any thought of providing someplace for those responsible riders, to be ever considered. On the other side of that, where those people that were using the parks, responsible riders, now they gonna be shut out. The effect that it's gonna have on those people. So just made that comment. And I understand the reason for it, but then there's the flip side to the coin also. As I mentioned, responsible riders. So just another thought.
Yes, sir. It's a good point. It might be something worth mentioning to the Recreation Department. There are some counties that have parks that are, or at least portions of them are dedicated for ATV use and things of that kind. But it's something we probably have to carefully consider, especially for the liability issues that we really discussed. But it's something worth exploring, I think.
Ms. Chair, last year, you remember, I kind of mentioned that about that.
Someone in North Georgia, sir?
Right, right. Well, I know in North Georgia, they have a huge ATV park. And I frequent it a couple of times, especially when I was still living in Atlanta area. But I do agree with you, Commissioner Jones. You know, I retire my ATV for a cleaner ride on the street. Some days of me getting dirty and muddy, yeah, and that too. But, you know, I just drive a sling now instead of the four-wheeler. But, you know, throughout my, my years as adolescent, all into my adulthood, you know, I rode, you know. But that's, that's a huge concern even to this day here in Liberty County. Where do you ride? And a lot of times, people have to have a truck, a trailer, and go to adjacent community to be able to do that. Sort of just like how we did this weekend where everybody went somewhere else to spend their spouse money, but I regret from that. But we do need to figure out a way to, you know, if we, if we shutting them out of these parks, which I do agree with from the public safety standpoint. But if we do that, we also need to figure out alternatives so they will have somewhere safe to ride.
Right.
So, and I think we could do both.
I agree with that.
All right. And we'll talk. My question was the one that you referenced, is it privately owned or is it public?
Well, that one is, I think is, that one's privately owned.
It'd be a moneymaker for somebody.
Yeah, most of them are.
Yeah, yeah, most of those are, are, you know, privately owned.
A moneymaker for somebody.
Where's it at? Noranville advertise.
Plantation.
Yeah.
It's in between Atlanta and Augusta, but you could Google it. It's, it's a, it's own little city out there though.
Yeah, they have their own.
You've been there too, right? They have cabins, everything.
Yeah, or you, they have camping spas.
Yeah.
It's like a, they open up for like a weekend.
Right.
It's privately.
But that, I mean.
They have vans or whatever.
There's thousands of ATVs out there. For some reason, mine was always the slowest.
You asking us to...
I'm getting older now.
Yeah, I'm getting older now, man.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm just sitting here, and, you know, we have several parks throughout the county. But, and I'm just thinking, there are certain times with all the activities from Highway eighty-four all the way down to the back of Long Bell Stadium. And, you know, you're bordered by the pool and the basketball court on one side, and then the batting cage or whatever it is down on the other end behind the National Guard. Certain times of the year, I can't imagine, with all the pedestrian traffic and the vehicle traffic, I can't imagine anyone with a four-wheeler having the room to enjoy doing that at Stafford Park.
No.
Miller Park is, you know, kind of off the beaten path, and there's not that much organized activity down there. It's a baseball field, a basketball court, playground, or what have you. And so if we were gonna restrict it, I would have to think that, and even to a certain point, certain times of the year at James Brown, I mean, it's a lot of moving parts in there. You couldn't do it there, but say Gun Branch, say...
Bribe Bay Park.
Bribe Bay, Miller Park, you know, something like that, you may can. But I just can't imagine every baseball game and the swimming pool open this time of year. I just can't imagine anyone on a four-wheeler even enjoying it at James Brown Park. Not, I mean, at Stafford Park. It just, it seems, it's too congested. It's too congested.
What are they, I guess we're having problems with them getting on the fields themselves and tearing them up?
This particularly is the park in Flemington. Fleming, actually Fleming.
Oh, the new park?
It was just an open, open space, and I think there's a playground there, and ATVs were buzzing, some of the kids and other visitors to the park.
Trying to mix the two.
Right.
You're talking about Gill Park?
That was one of the parks that I had in mind when I made my reference to the responsible drivers. And I used that park responsibly, and I know other couple of other riders that used the park also because of the expansive space that we have there at the present. And proximity to the playground, it doesn't infringe, one doesn't infringe on the other far as responsible riding, but then I have seen other riders that have come out there and, I guess, cut up the place and tear it up. So, like I said, I understand the reasoning for it. It's just we gonna be limited to places that we can enjoy. And it's just the option that maybe we could consider looking into to give the responsible riders, or even those that are not, some place that we can enjoy where we won't be so handicapped for spaces to ride.
We'll pass along their request to the Recreation Department and ask them to explore the possibility of allowing it in some parts, and then under what conditions, and where if they can take a look at existing parks. There are some public parks which allow limited ATV use as well. I think on state and federal grounds, but they can look into that if you'd like.
I think that's what the commission would like.
And this ordinance really codifies existing policy. You know, I don't think the Recreation Department officially allows ATVs on public parks, any event. It's just been something, it's been, you know, if not condoned, it's been permitted just because it hasn't been an issue to date, but...
All right, this is a recommendation coming from, really from the Board of Recreation. Items come from the Board of Recreation that we would have considered and approved this ordinance. All right, we've discussed it fully. We're going to ask the board commissioner Jones to look at perhaps entertaining, responsible use of four-wheelers on county property. But as we, I was thinking, as we're sitting here, we're now being good, what, collaborative commissioners and donate each other's property, have to get their parks up. We don't want them tore up. We putting our tax money there to make them nice. We're not trying to exclude anybody, nobody about that. We don't want, the owners want to come right behind the money we spend and undo.
Take them out of there, they go in someplace else.
Yeah, but we'll look at that. It's a good suggestion, good suggestion.
Yeah, when I, I went down, Raymond Grove Road, I didn't know that was you I saw flying down there.
Yes, sir, he'll come to you.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Water.
Go ahead.
I've heard the discussion there, and of course, there's some of the commissioners, maybe Commissioner Thrift, and maybe all of you have, can remember the time when we had issues with not four-wheelers, but, you know, a lot of people with four-wheel drive trucks. They were hunting a place to do their truck racing, their mud bogging, and things like that. And that was a pretty hard thing to try to get past. But a lot of that was being done on private property, and then, of course, the spoil from those mud pits was winding up on county roads or state routes. But there's a lot of time and effort, I mean, we've already done, discussed in one meeting about spending our money for the ADA, and that tells us that we're gonna have disadvantaged and handicapped people at these places. And I don't know when they're gonna be, and I don't have any idea when the four-wheelers are gonna gang up. In fact, I've got two of them, so I enjoy riding them, but it'll be on private property. But I just want to say that we need to, some of our property that we've got from recreation, it's, some of it was given to us at a very good price, some of it was donated, and we've leased some for a very small amount. So, you know, part of that is taking care of something. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I don't got, no problems at all with a four-wheeler. Like I said, it's just that, let's just take all things in consideration when we make the decision. And that's all I'm gonna talk about.
I think, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Water, isn't there twenty-five acres that was donated with Miller Park?
Commissioner Stevens, I'm not, I'm not sure. Where's it at?
Miller Park. Miller Park, I think it was twenty-five acres total that was donated with that one, and we only using about, what, four?
Yeah. The piece in the back, Commissioner Stevens, I'm not real sure of. But, and I don't know the history on Gill Park, to be honest with you. Joey, what, how was that arrangement?
We bought it.
We paid a reduced...
Reduced bit, mhm.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, what we've got out here is a decision to say, if we're gonna allow some of this, then we probably, we're gonna have to do more than put an ordinance out there. We're gonna have to have a designated spot, because when we do say a recreation facility, it's kind of like Commissioner Gilligan and I talked about, and we saw it. Every time you go down to Homestown Park, somebody's went through where the drainfields are, and behind where the second tank is there at the pavilion, and across the basketball court. So some of them are pickup trucks, but ninety percent of them are four-wheelers, ATVs or whatever. So, you know, it's our money, and we're spending some pretty top-dollar money for recreation. And if we're gonna continue and do it, that's fine, but we're gonna have to look out for our equipment. I'm, just having the grass mowed and irrigation systems out there, you know, have them tore up. After we've done, spent a bunch of money, it'd be like spending a bunch of money in a school building and going in there and tearing them up. So just want to say, I'm not gonna have a problem with four-wheelers, but it's gonna have to be in a designated area.
I think we all agree on that, sir.
Real quick, how much, I guess, just looking at alternative locations, I guess, once we send that back to the Recreation Department, they might get with you, Mr. Brown, about, you know, county-owned locations. I don't know how much land we still have, like the old airport. Is there anything left over there?
We've did some of it, well, all of it's leased to Georgia Power and Canoeche, no, Coastal, Canoeche, for emergency prep, and then it's used as a driver's course by Sheriff's Department, training and driving.
Right, I understand. And I mean, emergency, I know, Commissioner Thrift, now hopefully, we don't have any emergencies, but when we do, hopefully those emergencies are short-lived. So even if we use that particular location, and then if it was an emergency, then, you know, Canoeche and Georgia Power have the first right to use it or refuse.
Mr. Chair, just for that, Miller Park is thirty, is actually thirty and a half acres.
Miller Park in the back, though, Commissioner Stevens, is where we got both wells, and I really wouldn't want anything. And the only other thing back there is the wetlands that come around the edge.
Right, mhm. Wetlands with a four-wheeler? Sound like a good time to me.
That's a good time. Good time.
Hey, Commissioner Frazier.
Yes, sir.
Down off of, in your district, off of Franklin Street, you know the old Ox Station Pond?
Yeah.
Back up in there? I mean, the city owns that.
Right.
I don't know how big that is, but that's a, you know, pretty large area. And there was talk at one time that the city was gonna put a park back there, so I don't know.
Right, I was hoping that the city was still, you know, considering that, but...
I mean, they may be.
Right.
But I know that that's, that's the area that's just, yeah, we cut it once a month. And it's another area that they have, and that's probably in my district, which is off of Davison Street, around First and Second, in that area.
Okay.
So we could check with them and see.
Right, and then...
But that don't help the folks throughout the county. I mean, they would have to...
Absolutely.
They would have to come up here to do that.
But, you know, I've always believed in the, you know, if you build it, may it come, regardless. Because like I said, I know for a fact, the location I used to go to, in between Atlanta and Augusta, I used to drive for a couple hours just to go there, because, you know, I was one of the safe ATV drivers in Atlanta.
One of the responsible.
Right, and I know, I don't know if y'all have noticed, in the last ten, fifteen years in Atlanta, I mean, there's a lot who just do tricks down I-20, or through the city.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, yeah, just Google it.
All right, well, we'll work with the rec board.
Yeah.
Make the regulations better.
Sounds good.
So we need to approve the ordinance as presented by our county attorney.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second. Any further discussion?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman, could we put an effective date of July first on there? That gives us time for notification.
Okay. All right, straight to July first. All the favor, raise your right hand, please, and I'll say aye. All right. All right, in government agreement, SRO.
Yes, sir, and before we get to that, I just wanted to mention the handout I provided the board just a few minutes ago. As you know, the legislature kind of regularly amend state law governing timber operations. And then at the end, the last session, or I think the session before, so it's gonna require us to further revise our local ordinance governing timber operations. And so that's just for your reading before our next meeting. We just wanted to bring that to your attention. With respect to the SRO program, we need to get the board's approval for participation in an expanded SRO program. I think most of you have been detailed on it, but if not, I think the...
We knew it was pending.
Yep, the Board of Education, the sheriff been in discussion, and I think the school board would like to expand the resource officer program to not only Liberty High, but to Liberty Elementary and Midway Middle School. And that will require, I think, the employment of three additional SRO officers. I think it's proposed to be increased from one to three to four. And of course, your only participation in the agreement, which is largely between the sheriff and the Board of Education, is for budgetary purposes, to approve the budget that might be needed to accommodate the expanded SRO program. And Kim might better discuss the details, but the past formula has been the Board of Education pays roughly two-twölths of the total cost of the SRO program. Ten-twölths, sorry, excuse me. And that's largely represented by the salary and benefits of the SRO officers themselves. You have miscellaneous expenses like outfitting of officers with uniforms and equipment, vehicle insurance and vehicles and cell phones. But I think the vast majority of the budget is salary and benefits. And so under the proposed agreement, the school board will pay all of the salary and benefits of the SRO officers, even though the school will be in session only approximately ten months, not twelve months of the year. And the sheriff will be free to assign those deputies to other duties when the school is not in session. And the county's only responsibility will be to pick up the miscellaneous costs. The initial outfitting and equipping will be some initial cost, of course, but the reoccurring expenses are cellphone use, vehicle maintenance, vehicle insurance. And that's largely the expenses you're being asked to pick up. The school board will be responsible for the balance of the cost. And Kim might better tell you what the increased budget would be as a result of that. But again, based on the new formula, your share with respect to each officer will be greatly decreased to include only those miscellaneous items. And so that's their request. The program would just be expanded to include these additional schools in largely the same terms as exists now, with the exception of the budgetary responsibilities for the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners.
Without any increase outlay from the county, am I hearing you correctly?
There will be an increase because you are expanding the number of officers from one to four.
So we're giving him, if we approve, then he's gonna hire three more? He's not gonna already use what he...
I don't, I don't know what the sheriff's intention there is, if he's going to reassign deputies or hire new ones. I don't know, but...
Is this time-sensitive?
My understanding, we're not gonna pull deputies from the road or another area, that they would actually hire three, now, I'm not gonna say that. They may use some that they have to shift in there, but then they would backfill. So basically, yes, you'd need three more people. Right now, right now, your school resource officer budget in this year is right over seventy-two thousand. The bulk of that is salary and benefit. There's probably, in that seventy-two thousand, there might be four thousand dollars that relates to fuel, cellphone, vehicle maintenance, and that sort of thing. So in my mind, you're giving at least another two-hundred-and-ten-thousand for the salary and benefits, but that does not include the startup, the outfitting, whether, I'm guessing maybe two thousand dollars apiece, you know, just for the initial outfit.
What about the vehicles?
Well, that's the, that's the coin toss. We don't have a vehicle.
Right.
So it will add to the enterprise, if you end up going with the enterprise agreement, it will add to the enterprise fleet agreement, because you'll have to have three more vehicles. And that's, I mean, I...
So it may be, if you folks do have questions about the budget, again, most of this cost will be covered by the Board of Education, but if you have any questions about the budget, it may be best to defer the question to your mid-month. And the only time-sensitive issue, my mind, it's not really time-sensitive. The contract needs to coincide with your fiscal year, so it's best if we have it in place by July one. So that gives you additional time to consider the budgetary impact. And of course, the sheriff would like to begin to either reassign or recruit officers who might be eligible for SRO, and train them in time for the beginning of the school session. So I think July one is a reasonable effective date.
Kelly, did you say that the board will pay twelve, it will be like a twelve, twelve and zero?
The Board of Education historically has paid ten-twölths. But under the arrangements, they will pay one hundred percent of the salary and benefits.
And benefits.
And so we'll be responsible, it will be in your budget, but the Board of Education will reimburse you. Yes, sir, will reimburse you those. But we will be responsible for those miscellaneous costs, vehicle maintenance, vehicle insurance, equipment and uniform outfitting, cellphone.
It's not in your budget right now. I just want to make sure you understand that. So the budget that we just did, those three new officers are not part of that budget.
So it'll be additional.
You wanna go ahead and support this, that's one of the things that you would have to change before you adopt your budget at your mid-month meeting. I guess certainly you could amend it if you didn't include it on June seventeen. You could still amend your budget in July to include those three. But I just wanted you to know that those three officers are not in this budget that you just saw.
Ms. Kim and Kelly, Joey, what I'm hearing is that the...
What I'm hearing is that the county would actually benefit in two ways. The kids at the school will have a little bit more protection. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
The SRO. And then, two months out of the year, the Board of Education will continue to pay for these officers that the sheriff office will be able to utilize anyplace they want.
That's right.
Provided that during those two months, the school doesn't have something specific for them to do.
Okay.
In which I, I actually asked the question, and I'm not sure it was ever answered. I don't know if they have, uh, during summer school.
I mean.
They utilize the school resource officer, and I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm, I, somebody, I thought somebody said that they, they flip-flop every year. One year, summer school's at Bradwell, then Ed's Jared's at Liberty, then Bradwell. So, the school resource officer at Bradwell is provided by the city, Heinzville. And so, I, I don't know how that works as far as summer school. Now, you said, this program is for protection, and I would agree with you, but I would also think, at least in the elementary and middle school age, at least the elementary, that this is another way to help children.
Relationships.
Build a relationship, a positive relationship with somebody in uniform.
With the popo.
So, can you give me those schools again, and do they come?
I know we, that we, they fund one now, but they only fin, uh, fund that person for ten months.
Liberty High School, because that's when he's at the school.
Okay, so they, they're not willing to pay for twelve months, if that wasn't negotiated.
Not this, not, not as it seems now, but what they're doing is they do wanna pay.
What's proposed?
Twelve months.
Yes.
On the three.
Salary and benefits. They don't, they just don't wanna include like the cellphone charges and fuel or vehicle maintenance, which isn't material.
Shouldn't be that much, yeah.
It, it's, it's probably, I'm gonna guess, anywhere from two to four thousand dollars a year, max. Max.
Per officer.
Per officer. But the biggest thing is the initial outfitting and the vehicles.
Okay.
In my mind, it's the vehicles, the biggest thing.
You said elementary?
Midway Mill.
Midway Middle, Liberty Elementary, and of course, they'll continue the presence at Liberty High School.
Yeah. And, and I, I don't know if the city of Heinzville provides a deputy for the middle schools and the elementary schools inside the city limits, which might be something.
I think they do.
I, I hadn't seen them. I hadn't seen them at, uh, Button Gwinnett, at least when I, the times that I would go over there.
Yes, yes, elementary school though.
The, the.
As an elementary, so they won't do it at elementary?
They, they wanna.
The city.
The city.
I, I don't know if they, and I don't know if they have it at Lewis Frazier, or Snelsen Gold.
Nelson is.
Uh-huh.
Nelson and Lewis Frazier. I don't know if they provide one.
They used to. I'm not sure if they still do that.
I, I don't know. And I don't know if that's in, it would seem odd, it would seem odd that you would only do one middle school and.
And not do, yeah, well, certainly.
And not the whole thing, so I, I don't know.
And I think all of us realize that in this climate that we're in now, man, it's good to have, you know, that presence at the schools outside of, certainly to include the, uh, familiarity and, and the, uh, bond between civilian and the police department, but just having their presence there, just in the climate that we're in now. As, as, if I were a parent in middle school, should give me a level of confidence, knowing, a parent of an elementary child, that confidence knowing that there was someone there. Listen, even what, um, I'm, I'm hearing now, even Rhonda, uh, I won't say gross, Walter, she mentioned that even during the election, there were some people at the polls that were a little bit testy.
Yeah.
That their staff didn't feel comfortable dealing with, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
So, I can't, I don't know if we can say enough about having presence of.
No, I, I think all participants in the SRO program will admit that it's a success. And I think they just wanna extend that success to additional locations. And the, the stated purpose of the agreement is, just as you said, Commissioner Frazier, it's not only to provide security to promote and foster a better relationship between law enforcement and the community.
Well, you're.
Big break.
Our, 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 our family members may not be employed there, but some of the family members are employed there. They would have a high level of confidence knowing that someone is there.
There, right.
On the law enforcement side.
Yes.
You, you just never know. Of course, I understand, you can go to Walmart, I understand.
Yeah, well, I, I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is, um, and, and I fully agree with all the benefits, you know, I mean, the, the exposure for the kids and, uh, and the protection from, you know, between, standing between good and evil and, and all that. But why would the, the board, um, come all the way almost to the, to the end? I mean, they, they, they want it, but they don't, they don't want all of it. Well, I, I don't quite understand that.
Well, I, I think, uh, throughout the state, you know, the, the SRO program is basically sanctioned by state law. And in most jurisdictions, it is a cooperative effort. Uh, you know, the, the city or a county, depending on jurisdiction, will share in the funding, together with the Board of Education, of resource officers, recognizing that it's not only a benefit to the school, but to the community, given the, one of the purposes being to foster a better relationship between law enforcement and the community. So, I think everybody recognizes it's a win-win for all participants. And so, based on that, I think all jurisdictions are willing to participate in funding, some more than others. You know, if, uh, based on the current proposal, the Board of Education seems willing to, uh, share responsibility for most of the budget, which I think is commendable. It's a, it's a, it's a break from the current practice, so it's.
I guess my question would be better, better presented to the school board, ask them why, why would they wanna stop at ninety-five instead of getting a hundred? Because, I mean, they, they, they still not doing the whole thing. Now, now, you know, this, and I know this is live, but, uh, I mean, you know, this is the same school board that put AstroTurf on a baseball field that hadn't won a game since seventy-six. So, you know, money shouldn't be an issue, but anyhow, I'm.
Well, I, I think they, the reason for the increased funding participation by the Board of Education is they recognize that the in, the expansion of the program would result in some increased cost to the county, and so I think they wanted to offset as much as they could.
Offering the.
Mr. Chair. I, I will say this, I think this is a great improvement in a way, coming back, back from the Board of Education compared to years past, and I think you know where I'm going. When the Board of Education used to support the library, then all of a sudden they quit. At least, they might be trying to come back, you know.
I believe in that.
Yeah.
I said, I'm, I'm, I believe in that.
You believe they gonna come back to, to support the library?
No.
Okay.
But I, I know the sheriff is already, uh.
Let's, let's stick to task.
I know the sheriff has probably already, already taken some action in, uh, in reliance on the, the continued agreement, at least with respect to Liberty High. So, if we could, probably decide the issue at your mid-month, we decide the other budget issues.
Right.
And, uh, that could allow for appropriate.
Yeah, we just need to have a better feel of what that number is.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if you're, if you're just wanting to know, my guess.
The concept we agree with is just that number.
My guess is a, at least another two hundred and ten thousand that you would have to budget expenses, and then you would also budget offsetting revenue. Um, because if you're just talking about salary and benefits, I'm gonna say the salary and the benefits, benefits being, you know, health insurance, life insurance, um, like, uh, retirement, that kinda thing. I'm gonna say seventy thousand, probably per, uh, officer is probably a safe, conservative guess. Maybe, mine may even be that much, but I'm gonna guess that you'd have to increase your budget by about two hundred and ten thousand. And then you would also get that same offsetting revenue. What you don't have in the budget, and what you would need to try and figure out is, what are they gonna drive? How are you gonna get that right now?
Okay. And, and Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown, let's go back to the, uh, enterprise rental. Now, we know that the county just purchased some automobiles. Are they going to get rid of all of those vehicles and keep, or what, on the enterprise? Because if not, I don't see why the SRO can't drive some of the vehicles that
Taken offline.
Just purchased, and we won't have to, the county won't have to purchase vehicles for them.
Well, so, all that's in the enterprise agreement, some of those will be, if they were just purchased, they're not due to be traded in then for about three years, probably as part of that. Um, I, I'm not sure that, as we look at the enterprise, that that's gonna be that. And it's gonna cost, but I don't think that's gonna be significant enough to make a big difference. I think, I think the biggest thing in my mind is, not that it's big, is just capturing those startup costs. Uniforms, outfitting, pistol car, I mean pistol phone, those things. The enterprise will, it'll blend.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get them in there.
Okay.
Huge vehicle.
All right.
Okay.
Feel better already?
Yeah, you're definitely getting much a bigger bang for your buck, and it's a, a very beneficial service, I think.
All right.
Definitely, uh, lay the message to the Board of Education that, that we definitely appreciate your participation.
Mr. Chairman.
We looking forward to, to continue this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Waller, I'm tired, man.
Let, let me ask you, uh, have you, had you had a request from the chairman of the Board of Education about this?
Uh, yes, sir. They presented a, a signed contract, and it just requires the county's approval and, and counterpart. But, uh, it's also gonna be revised further based on my review, and to capture these new changes that we're discussing tonight. But yes, sir, we've had conversations with the sheriff, we've received a copy of the contract signed by the superintendent, and, uh, what relating to you is, has been conveyed to us by the sheriff.
Yeah.
We were all aware it was coming.
No. I, yeah, my question was, has, has our school board superintendent had dialogue with our chairman about this?
Not directly, no, sir. Only through staff.
And, right, and I, I, um, if nobody wants to save a child's life, um, no more than I do, and my wife's a teacher. Uh, but the thing about it is, is it would appear to me that once this happens, that, you know, we ought to have some dialogue with the Board of Education, with you letting us know what's going on here. Um, I'm not, and will not vote for something like this tonight, especially after our very first conversation with and his, um, his other deputies or he needed eleven jagers. So, um, if the Board of Education wants to totally fund it, cars, uh, insurance and everything else, that's fine. But you and I both know, you sit on the Board of Education, and if a teacher is at fault, it's the Board of Education that's gonna catch the brunt of it. And if it's gonna be, um, a deputy that has an issue with a student, or a parent, or another teacher, or even someone from another county at a ballgame, then it's gonna come back and, and reflect, not only on the sheriff, but it's gonna come to us too. So, I don't, I don't care nothing about voting on this tonight. If y'all wanna vote on it, you will, but I, I'm not gonna vote on it. I'll abstain before I, there's not enough conversation happening on this yet.
He's, he's.
And I, I know, I don't want the board to get the wrong impression. I think the primary conversations have been between the superintendent and the sheriff, because they're the primary parties to the agreement, that's how it's been historically. And so, the Board of, Board of Commissioners has brought in the conversation for budgetary purposes for now. But, and the sheriff, I wanna say to his credit, has kept the county, the staff and myself, fully informed about the progress of the, the contract. And so, I, I don't wanna lay fault on anyone's feet. I, I think the board is being formally involved in the conversation now, because it's the appropriate time, given that the budget is being presented to you, or at least to.
It's a good financial offer from the.
And I appreciate that, but we also know, all of us commissioners know that if anyone needs help, it's our administration. And we're trying to do what we can with what we got. It's a needs-based budget right now. And, um, and we're gonna have to make it like, to stay like that for a while, and, and, and till next year, because, uh, you know, I'm not gonna sit up here, and, and I know y'all ain't either, every six months, to come up because another constitutional officer wants something. Uh, make their mind up and let's get it over with. But, um, that's all I'm gonna say about it. You got the floor, Mr. Chair.
We'll bring it back mid-month.
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, ju- just, just one question, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Uh, uh, do other jurisdictions, uh, for example, like with Savannah, I, I know they, they have, uh, SROs over there, but their, their cars are marked differently than, you know, Chatham County or s, what, I think they, they merge now. Whatever the case is.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Their, their, uh, school resource officers have their own particular cars. Are those cars funded by the city of Savannah, or the, or the, uh, Chatham County? Or are they funded by the Board of Education? The reason why, I, I guess you see where I'm going with that. Because, I mean, I kinda like what Commissioner Gilligan said. I mean, if they going ninety-five down ninety-five percent, I mean.
How bad would that?
Purchasing other, other vehicles, you know, I, I don't, I don't see why, why not. And at least, all the vehicles could be uniform, you know, from, from the schools in, in the city of Heinzville, and also the schools in, outside of Heinzville, where they just have their own particular, you know, school resource officer vehicles. Or is that too much to ask? I don't know.
Mm-mm.
You can, I, I made a note, we can certainly check.
Yeah.
Find out and get that out before the mid-month.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, I too, uh, whenever you bring back the, um, the budget for those three, and I assumed there was gonna have a floating one, because you only said three schools.
Three schools.
Right, I guess they're gonna have.
So, that we totally.
And then somebody supervising them and also floating.
So, almost like another department of SROs.
Well, we have a department, an SRO department.
And it's just, right now, there's only one, and it's always been one for a ve, long as I've been here, it's been, it's been one.
Right.
And so, whenever you bring that back, I also wanna know what we've already given the sheriff's department since January 1st, including what we did with those eleven, and now, and then we, there were some more in his budget, and now, three more. So, I wanna know all those numbers, or what we've actually given to that department, no doubt. I'm all about safety in the schools, or anywhere else you may go in Liberty County. But there's also somewhere you gotta draw the line, and, and you can't give it all at one time. And he may have to pulls, uh, i- if he really wants to do it, is pull three from somewhere else and put them in there. Because, you know, this, this is getting kinda ridiculous to me, that, that every time we come up here, the department is wanting more employees, or more officers.
Is this a hundred percent?
There's been an additional seven.
Funded by the Board of Education?
No, not the, not these three.
Additionals.
I'm, I'm sorry?
So, since January.
Since January.
Additional seventeen positions.
An additional seventeen positions.
So, these three more.
Would be twenty since January, in six months.
Right, and there, now, I, I don't know.
Five, five months.
In your current budget.
Five months.
In, in your current budget, there's also something in there for, for public safety as well, as we.
Mm-hmm. Right.
There's, there is some, and, and it could.
I don't know that I could vote on that and put it on the back of taxpayers' money continuously, you know. Um, I, I think that they could be covered, that resource could be covered by pulling employ, uh, officers from, out of that seventeen that we've already approved.
Or within your current, ready to.
That's, see, we need to have that dialogue with the chairman.
If you'll look at your personnel and capitalizing, that are set to be approved, you have a list, and, and there are some slates.
Oh, that's right, yeah, mm-hmm, in the budget. But that, that's where the dialogue needs to come in with our chairman.
I haven't had that.
And, and you know, and just say, hey, you know, we've given you these already, and, and now you're, I need three more. You're out there signing a contract, and you haven't come before us for, you know, to let us know how much it is.
And you.
More it is.
One percent.
You know?
Now, if I'm not mistaken, if we're gonna move on.
I can run for that right now.
If I'm not mistaken, when they came, was that not part of their PowerPoint, the, the idea by adding the, I know there's been some discussion about adding the SROs, I remember that.
It was in their budget present.
Yeah.
It was in their budget, and we took it out, and now they're back wanting it again, under a different.
We didn't take it out.
Person presenting.
What you did is you identified.
We had more questions about it.
You, you.
And we still do.
By a number.
Yeah.
That you were going to approve, but knowing that once you say, okay, you get, you know, I'm just using it, for example, you get three more. And even though you might say, okay, they're, they're three deputies, or they're three road officers, or they're three narcotics, they can put them wherever they want.
That's right, you're exactly right. I understand.
Was presented, there were some more positions, that's all I'm reminding you of.
Right.
Just go ahead and look at what.
So, the only.
Already have in there set.
So, Mr. Chair, the only thing I got, last thing I'm gonna just say on this one is, the only good part about, percentage part of this one is the Board of Education will be paying greatly most of the bill.
It'd be good if they would back up and pay some mostly of the one we already approved.
Well, this is gonna be.
If the dialogue was there.
Am I right, Mr. Chair?
Well, now, I wanna make that clear, the, the, the new contract covers all four SRO officers. So, even the one that you've already.
Got.
One quote, budgeted. All, all of the salary benefits for that officer will also be paid by the Board of Education. So, the formula, the formula will be applied to all SRO officers, uh, including the one that's currently assigned to Liberty High School.
Okay.
But only three of them, in any given day, only three of them's gonna be actually at the school, and then there's one floating. He could be out at the gym.
I personally don't have information on that, but I'll, I'll confirm those matters with the sheriff, but that's my understanding.
with the sheriff, but that's my understanding as well.
Right.
That's just another body.
As far as reimbursement, thi, this is a better.
That's right, I agree with that, but he could, he.
He gets a hundred percent of 12 months of salary and benefits versus 10, 12.
That's just a way, to me, of getting three new employees.
For only like four, $5,000, so you, this is a better reimbursement deal than what we currently have. It's not the best, and I agree with you, I think, I don't understand why they can't cover it, and.
Well, yeah, well.
But the state has much money as a city.
I, I just text my school board rep and asked him, have they ever considered campus police, that take care of all the schools and everything else that they want?
Yeah, I mean.
Get their own uniforms, and, don't they have, Savannah State got a police team, don't they?
I believe they have their own, in some bigger cities, they have their own.
I think, I think the issue with, uh, with that, per se, is.
A security guard.
Right, top flight. But I, I think the issue with that is, whenever you're looking at the certifications, everything to truly become of, you know, a, a department.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but now, and like you said, even if we'd look at, at the increase in our population in Liberty County, you know, it, it might not look like it's needed today, but, you know, 10 years from now, they, we're gonna have more elementary schools, we're gonna have to have more middle schools, and, and hopefully we just combine and have one huge high school, so we'll start winning some games again.
Well, I just, that's why I asked the question, why would you only put a school resource officer at Midway Middle, and you wouldn't have one at Lewis, Razor, and Southside Golden? That, that, to me, is, is, like, why wouldn't all of these schools have them?
Right, right, I agree. But we don't know if the, if the city's there or not.
Yeah.
So why, why just a county one?
What they're asking for from you is a better deal than what you currently have.
Thank you, let's stop right there, and you will get the other questions answered, you bring the numbers back to us.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we'll take it from there.
And we'll get the information in advance of your mid-month.
We appreciate it.
But that was a lot of questions, Mr. Davis, I didn't see a pen in your hand right now.
Oh, I'm getting older, but my mind is still wrong. I've got it.
You're gonna look at this and that tape.
Yeah, and all fails, I usually email Joey as to what the questions were.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it, good to see you. Contract EMS.
Hadn't seen you in a while, Kelly, don't, don't let us run you off.
Um, Mr. Chair, I know it's been briefly mentioned about EMS transition that's gonna happen over here, in fact, September 1st, without getting into a full display on that, which I'd be glad to do, probably for your mid-month, it is expected to transition back over to the county September 1st of this year. In anticipation of that, we've been going through a, a full review of everything, staff and the committee, that you and Ms. Thrift set on, on behalf of the Board for the EMS operation to be looked at. So we will be transitioning a possibly 25 people over here in September, that's about a direct split between part-time and full-time, as currently exists. Part of the operation that we need to go ahead and get ramped up in anticipation of the first, is to go ahead and engage a billing service. It's currently the one that's being used by the hospital, they're doing very well, they only do EMS billing, they're, they're a national company that does that. You have before you a contract with them, EMS MC, they actually provide four basic services, and, you know, obviously we've had a chance to look at this agreement a little bit, preparing and doing the initial and secondary claims for bills, they do routine collection efforts, which includes several notices to that, they issue up to three statements to do that, and then referring accounts to an outside billing agency if necessary. Now, they don't do collections beyond that, that would be for, for us and the Board to pursue, if those accounts are collectible, and we deem collectible. I, I don't have to tell you that part of that operation, or a main part of that operation's Medicare-Medicaid billing, so we have to also go ahead, once we engage this contract, this company will help us start that process, because the Board of Commissioners will actually be the provider of EMS services, and as such, has to have a Medicaid-Medicare billing number. That takes at least 90 days to get, so if there's anything that defers us beyond September 1st, most likely, it would be that. So it's crucial we go ahead with that September 1st date, engage this contract with these folks, to help walk us through that. The other thing we've gotta get going is EMS licensing transfer, and we have got a spin-up call for that tomorrow, too, with the state, to talk about how that is going to happen. But all that plays in to these folks, helping us get what we need to have in place in order to go live September 1st, to do that. So that's what's before you tonight. There'll be several other follow-on parts as we walk through the licensing and things like that, that'll come in the next 90 days, but this is the first part of that.
Does that mean an additional, uh, employee coming on the, for the financial side?
Well, so what actually, um, you talking about in finance in here? No, sir, because they'll do all the billing and all the collections, they take the money, deposit it straight into the account that we set up for them to put it in, we provide them with the account number and everything, and they, they do the collections and drop it in. There is one administrative person at EMS, so real quickly, what happens is, Paramedic Geyer goes in the field, he traps the data on the call, on the patient, pertinent information that's needed to do the billing, it goes into one of their software programs automatically in the field, on an iPad, it's brought back in, then the billing clerk with EMS double-checks the field data to make sure it's accurate before she pushes the button and submits it into their program, for, for a bill to be generated. So that is the only staff person that's involved with that billing process to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Joey, there's, so the, the entire staff now, right, right today, they're employees of the Liberty County Hospital Authority.
Yes, sir.
Are all of them planning to come over? I mean, it's.
As far as we know, Commissioner Geyer, we, we actually have a meeting with them at 8:30 in the morning.
Okay.
We wanted to bring this before you, and as part of the budget process, we've got an amount built in there to, for the uncollectible, basically, the expense above the revenue. EMS, not a moneymaker. It's patient mix right now, in fact, I was just looking at that again, the patient mix, based on the history, is about 39% Medicaid, 18% Medicare, 39%, Medicaid, 18%, commercial insurance, about 25%, and self-pay, 17%. So there, there are a large number of write-offs, some of those are uncollectible based on the payer, whether it's Medicaid or Medicare, some of those you, you can't pursue any further under certain conditions. So the difference in your budget right now that's out there is roughly about $725,000, this, this booked in there, that's something the hospital has been carrying over the last several years, and if you remember a little bit of history, had come to us and said, hey, look, in that agreement you guys struck with us by handshake in '92, it's worked pretty good, except that, except that, you know, it, it's become more of a challenge for us, running a hospital and running that operation, it fits better in the public safety sector, we, we think, too, you know, can be quiet for, we'll be quiet for a minute.
It's been with the hospital authority of, since the.
'92.
Since '92.
'92 it moved over, and it moved over, Commissioner Geyer, because they had, at that time, Medicare-Medicaid billing companies weren't that advanced, but we knew that they ran those operations over there, they were doing some of those billings. Diana Reed, in fact, was a sole employee we had, trying to do Medicare-Medicaid and all collections out of a trailer, down by the old hospital, so it was transferred to the hospital for, for that, and to really, I don't see how we use the term draw business to the hospital, but it was more cohesive mix at that time, much has changed now with that hospital operation and with EMS. So there, it, it will be a process moving forward that we'll outline for you as far as the game plan and the team, and I, I've got a presentation I wanna be able to give to y'all to do that and talk, talk offline with y'all, so.
Joey, got a question, Mr. Chair. Uh, you said about 25 of them, are, are there going to be a rehiring process, or will they come over and keep, uh, the benefits that they have from the hospital, would it merge over to the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, or what?
So part of what we've been examining as a, as a work team, and as a staff internally with us and the hospital, have been payables, financials, HR, mix of benefit plans to do that, and some of that will be what we discuss with them tomorrow. Your first question, they, they will not, if they have completed a probationary period with the hospital, they won't start a new probationary period over here. If they're still on a probationary period with the hospital over there, they will continue that probationary period through our period, but in looking at the mix there, though, we believe, I don't believe there's anybody that is still under probationary period, unless they were just hired, you know, in the last 30 days or so.
I mean, my point, I know this is recorded, but I'm gonna say it like I wanna say it, sometimes you bring over the good and the bad.
Well, but they won't go through.
That's where I'm saying it.
Yes, sir, they won't go through a rehiring process over here. One of the biggest challenges with EMS in the region, and I know you're aware of this, is that right, right now, it's about half-full-time, half-part-time. That's, that's not uncommon from what we're seeing in, in our, some of our neighboring counties and communities, and in fact, even experiencing as far as Midwest and North Georgia, because we've done some research up there. The, the challenge is to compete heavily enough, just like with firemen, you want us to be primary, we wanna be primary. It was that way one time.
Right.
And, and the migration happened out, now we've gotta get them back in. Saying that, Commissioner Stevens, our goal is to retain every one of those that we can right now.
As primary.
Period, because we're short.
Because, the reason why I'm saying primary, because when we have storms, they are obligated someplace else, to be there, Liberty County could be left empty-handed. The same thing that I expressed with the hiring of the firefighters.
Exactly.
They have to be primary to Liberty County, they can work someplace else, but Liberty County is their primary home whenever there's unnecessary, undue weather is coming.
Right. So, 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 right now, it takes about 28 folks to be able to work four units on the road, all the time, 24 hours a day. We don't have enough full-time people to do that right now. So what's important for us right now, on our analysis, is to keep every warm body we got working. We were down to lessen that this weekend, as a matter of fact.
Because I guess three, three units was at the shop when I passed by over the weekend.
Yeah, we didn't have enough staffing to run for.
Mr. Chair, it's quick. Uh, I know, a, a couple of years ago, I mentioned about insurance and, and us looking at reaching out to, like, the Board of Education, City of Hinesville, and hospital, uh, do, do you think that, that's something that we could look back at, to try to get the best bang for our book, for insurance?
So in insurance, in, in the insurance market, there, there's not more power in people, it's, it's the mix, and so we did reach out, um, we reached.
Right, with.
To Humana, we reached out to.
With the senior group, what, you're talking about with the mix with, you're talking about the employees?
Well, the Board of Education's under state health insurance plan, so there's no mixing with them.
Gotcha.
They're out, they're out of the thing. The hospital is a self-insured, with a type, a hospital-type insurance that goes there. The city's with, currently shopping the market again, but they were with Humana, so when we went back, we talked with, after that, we talked with Humana, we talked with LeCrosse, we talked with one other provider, and said, look, if we put more people in the game, does that make the rates better? And they said, absolutely not.
No.
It's about who's in the game, their histories, their.
Claims.
Their claims, and their risk, their risk factors that are involved. So just having a larger number in the insurance industry.
And the hospital folk actually admit it worse because they use the doctors more.
Got you.
Yeah, yeah, there's more claims paid out.
But we did look at it.
We did, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so this is the billing process.
So it's a first, it's, it's the first step in what will be a growing period, a, a challenged period for, for staff and for commission, and for folks to be able to get the level of EMS service that, that, that you want. Hospital's done a great job, I don't take away from that, but they have a, a lot of irons in the fire related to hospital work, that has significantly changed since 1992.
Mr. Brown, let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
You've already, this has already been mentioned to the employees.
No, sir.
In the morning.
In the morning at 8:30.
In the morning, and, but, but we're here now.
We are, because we had to get your.
You know, I'm gonna say, we're here now.
The billing piece here.
Uh?
Just the.
Right, but, but, no, but it was what he said, you know.
If, if you, if you didn't wanna move forward, I wasn't gonna meet with him at 8:30.
Oh, okay, okay.
You got to have some revenue coming in.
You were the first stop.
Gotcha, I just wanted to make sure you, you were.
Yeah, absolutely, you guys are the first stop.
Yeah. You need a motion on this, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract with EMS, converting over to Liberty County for a collection, is that, was that?
Yes, there'd actually be a billing service agreement.
Billing service.
EMS MC, yes, sir.
Okay.
Second, that motion.
I want you in a second to accept the contract proposal, Mr. Brown, EMS, and the management and consultants. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Make that move.
I'm back, Commissioner Wallen.
He done dozed off.
You gone?
Oh. Liberty Independent Troop Park, is that again?
Yes, sir, it is time, that again, almost, it actually renews in August, but that is before you, the lease is unchanged, still with the trustees of Liberty Troop there.
Excuse me.
So it's just a renewal.
Commissioner Jones brought, brought up the task on that.
Uh, so Liberty Independent Park, the majority of it does not belong to the county, it actually belongs to Liberty Independent Troop, which is a, gosh, help me with the history there a little bit, gonna balk out on the, on Facebook on that, not revolutionary, but it's a troop that was formed during a war period, okay?
My, my, my Google's just working a little slow, but I got your back, give me one second.
That's when I.
Right, not rev. So, so the park, actually, they started letting the Recreation Department many, many years ago, take off pieces and start using it for recreation. They have indicated a desire at some point in time to be able to transition that to county ownership. Unfortunately, what happened is, a, a lot of the old members that were on there are no longer with us, and so they were trying to reorganize a little bit to get that task accomplished. So we continued to just lease it from them for $8,000 a year, which is pretty reasonable, and I think that's really what the reference was made for, you know, a, a reasonable price for use. Many, many, many years, we didn't pay anything for it. I think only as recent as maybe four years ago, or five years ago, we started paying $8,000 a year.
I'd like to bick it, the whole staff of the park.
It's not ours.
I think one day it will be.
Yeah. You got some prime property right there. You need a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, I need a motion.
Yes, sir, I make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with Liberty Independent Troop.
Second. Second. Commissioner Jones, you good?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor would say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Larry didn't tell him to say aye.
He's ready.
Aye.
Administrative report.
Yes, sir, I'll move, real quickly, but answer any questions along the way you need me to. First thing is, just the capital projects, which you're aware of, that are, are active right now, the Miller Park Fire Station, as you know, is under design, we're waiting on a preliminary to come back for y'all to look at, and be able to offer comments on. The Public Works Facility, I did receive some information, plat this week, as a matter of fact, from Mr. Long on that, that shows the new land proposed to be purchased there. In order to accomplish that, that's been transmitted last week to, to the landowner, so they will take that to their Board and come back to us on that. Midcoast Tea Hangars, we have a pre-construction meeting on that project next week to get that kicked off. The 119 Freight Connector crossed a huge threshold this past week, and it received environmental clearance.
Wow.
From Federal Highway Administration. That has been the holdup for a long time. So now that project will progress, it's due to start acquiring right-of-way in fiscal year '22 of the state, which begins, as y'all know, July. So during that period, right-of-way will start, probably take 18 months to acquire all the right-of-way in that. Construction is proposed for 2024 fiscal year, which is really just two years away, which isn't too bad. isn't too bad. So that's moving on. The Head Start Center, I'll show you a picture of in just a second, is making great progress. And then EMS Station Two, you saw, I think, that layout in, that's basically a ability to hold an expanded crew. It'll hold four ambulances in there, going back to what Commissioner Frazier had suggested was not, definitely not to underbuild that station. And it has an office in there also. So that is going into some design, preliminary design now too, to be ready to, for y'all to take a look at.
Joey, on that Freight Connector, I've never seen the plans or the drawings for that. Do you have those?
I do.
Yeah, a guy asked me today, and let's say you get on it, coming back this way on the eastern, on the other side of the railroad track, the overpass. And he was saying, and let's say, and you get off of it down in Waltherville, and he was asking me, I mean, it made perfect sense after he mentioned it to me, that if you had a spur off of that to get off somewhere around, let's say, in Heinzville, say out by Lewis Frazier School. But if not, if it's this, you know, you get on it down there and you get off it down there, if you live in Heinzville, if you're trying to bypass the traffic, then you get off in Waltherville, you got to come back this way. So do you know, and I'll get with you to, so you can show me the drawings.
It does not. It's a limited access road and the only piece that's really being built as part of that, you know, is that piece at the Liberty County line that runs down to...
Beyond Bacon and Church.
Bacon and Church, just beyond Bacon and Church. It's not really a large bypass.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not really a large one.
That's phase, we call it phase one.
This is phase one.
I don't need to see it. I already saw it when you said that.
Yeah, we hope that the phase two will maybe have something like what you just...
Yeah, I mean, you know, it wouldn't make sense to get on it down there by the Leroy Koffer somewhere and then got to go all the way to Parkers and then come back to, come back to Longhorn, you know?
Yeah, that is that actually, phase two route.
That's that phase two.
Okay. This is that Head Start building. So you can see the concrete walls going up around it, being done in sections. But they are making great, great progress and don't have not indicated any problem with materials delivery or anything related to COVID or the backlog, which is great. Just a few other things we're working on, putting together a presentation, as Kim mentioned earlier, Treasury Department came out with an initial set of guidelines. They still have that under a public comment period, but we're gonna go ahead, we've been doing some things with ACCG, GMA, gathering everything we can on it to finalize a PowerPoint for you to look at. And then you'll need to follow that up with a planning session, okay? Because Treasury makes it real clear in their guidance that it's a go-forward plan that you should establish to last you through 2024. So we'll carry you through that process, let y'all decide what that plan will be. We're trying to vet everything we can. Keep in mind, I think what's a little bit scary about this is this one's guided by Treasury. And one thing's for sure, there's not a reach-out person at Treasury that you can call and say, hey, listen, we're thinking about doing this with that, is it okay? They're gonna catch that in an audit and then you're just gonna return the money. And so there is a quarterly reporting period on that money. And so it's important that you lay a plan out and that you feel real good that Treasury is going to bless that plan. There is no way to send it to Treasury and get their pre-approval. So we're gathering all the information we can. We got a book going and we'll share everything we got with y'all. So we continue to gather data on that. I'll let Mr. Mosley talk about the summer youth, just real quickly.
We have, we've sent applications, appeal to students to apply. We had about 27 students to apply. We narrowed it down, we had 15 slots. We interviewed the students all in various places in the county about three weeks ago. We sent letters out to the students who did not apply. And Mr. Howard shared with me in the casual conversation, he said, we didn't have enough students. He said, send some of the students over to us. So we sent the information to him. And we are scheduled to meet on next week with the students to do orientation. We'll meet with department heads. We reached out to the department heads who want to participate. We had about nine different department heads participate. Some would take one, some would take four, like Jimmy in the Recreation Department. And we've asked them to come up with some ideas so we can give the students ideas ahead of time in terms of what would be, what will be the expectations and what will be the responsibilities. And then beginning of the week of the 14th, they will commence with us with two days of just ideas, creativity, things about their future. Then the subsequent Mondays, we'll do additional training with them. And hopefully we can do a field trip on one Friday during that five-week. And then on that last Friday, we hope the chairman would join with us and we have a graduation ceremony with them.
Okay.
Sounds good.
They've done a great job with that. We were lucky enough to be asked to participate in the interviews a week or so ago, and that was humbling to be able to see those young people in there. Kelly presented that timber ordinance tonight for y'all to look at. We'll put that on the mid-month. We've talked about the transition plan. Just a quick update as far as COVID goes, the governors did extend that order. Again, it was due to expire on May 31st or did expire on May 31st. They extended it till June 28th in there. Couple of things off the health website this morning that we'll report on some more tomorrow on Facebook, but 17% of our population has received partial vaccines and 14% full. Now, what I understand from talking this morning to somebody though about that is those do not include folks that were vaccinated on Fort Stewart. So those numbers are probably a little higher, a little higher than that. But I think a little bit troubling is our transmission rate that needs to be below 100 has climbed since we met last time from about 107 all the way to 163. And anything over 100, obviously you can, you could do a mask mandate for. So not suggesting that, but that's been our gauge, that's been our indicator, is that transmission index. So a little bit troubling that it has climbed and those don't reflect the most recent holiday.
Joey, now when you said the percentage that's been vaccinated, that includes everybody in Liberty County or at a certain age?
People are, that would include anybody that's been vaccinated that's been reported to the Department of Public Health.
Right, but I'm talking about the percentage of the population.
Correct.
It's all of Liberty County, all 65, 70,000.
Correct.
Mr. Brown, while you're at it, could you explain the procedure for attendance of meetings due to COVID as of right now for those who are listening?
Yes, sir. Again, and we'll talk about it again when we do our presentation and we put a special air tonight as far as public hearing goes. The transmission rate index has kind of been the guide we've been using. I think when we looked at it a couple of weeks ago, at least I was in hope that it was down to around 105, that it might drop below that and might come back in and say, hey, look, it's down, let's, can we reopen everything? But right now, as you're aware, the meetings are only open to folks that have items on the agenda. Anything that's dealing with a public hearing, we, the reason we continue to do the Facebook and we'll continue to do that and monitor those so that we can stop and answer those questions for those folks.
All right.
And your order, because the state emergency is in requiring masking county buildings is still applicable, mask and temperature checks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just, Mr. Chairman, if I could, one more thing to mention. I received a call, I'm not sure if any of y'all did, related to the discharge of firearms in a residential area.
Yes.
So I look back, actually checked several counties, found that most do have some form of ordinance that is either related to the zoning or zoning type or is related to discharge of a firearm within so much proximity to a residence, period, regardless of zoning types. I didn't know what the board's desire, you want us to look a little further and get with Mr. Davis and draft something for consideration, think about it, but just want to make you aware that there are some others that have that if it's something that you...
I would have thought we had one. Please do look at it.
I would have thought we had one.
We don't have anything on our books.
Oh, boy.
Starting discharge of firearms.
I've got someone right next to me that...
Residential area.
Yeah, let's play catch-up real quick.
With the increase of growth and subsidies, that's probably about it.
Yes.
We'll continue to do that.
Hey, Commissioner Jones earlier about responsible and non-responsible, some people aren't responsible.
Responsible.
Joe, you was on that '76 baseball team, wasn't you, that won the championship? Yeah, I remember, I was at that game. You only struck out twice.
I'm wondering why that came up.
Mr. Brown.
I struck out.
Joey, one thing, maybe I missed it. You started off with the Miller Fire Station. Did you have anything, so where are we exactly now with the Miller Park? We're waiting on the design.
We are waiting on the design and I didn't bring this up earlier, but Mr. Long was here over the ADA improvements. And so what he's gonna go back and do now is, is after he got the board direction, he'll finish up that design on those things that incorporate that with the park.
Okay. And you know that they are putting up the playground equipment down there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Good. Of course, I know you have it on your, he may not know, it's anyway looking for the property for the board of elections.
I do. Yes, sir. All right. Do these other things.
Can you get the freight truck mosquito control to give us like a route when he's in our area? Like, I think you do that every year, but if you'll remind him or send us an email.
I will.
So when people ask when a mosquito trucks come by my house...
Well, it's, you know, right now, that's an easy, kind of an easy answer because they don't, because they, the numbers, the number counts aren't up. We haven't had the rain, we don't have the mosquito population.
So they haven't started spraying?
A man. But I will get him to, maybe get him to do a presentation for you, a short one, give you those number counts by district. Definitely we can get you the routes because they won't change.
Make sure he can tell us about the day mosquitoes and night mosquitoes.
Certain area, but need to know another area.
But I'll be glad to follow up with it.
All right. Ribbon cutting for Dorchester Friday at 12 noon.
Yep.
And then stay at the county address. Thank y'all so much for agreeing to attend on June 24th, 12 noon at the Performing Arts Center. It'll be a great time for us.
Mr. Chairman, you and I need to get together on that.
Okay.
And Mr. AC called and I was gonna give him your email so that we can...
He's got my number, not email.
Get together.
Okay. All right, is that all for the good order? All right. Chair and trainee motion to adjourn.
Oh, move. Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Commissioner Walden.
He gone.
Been gone, man.
Been gone? I thought he came back one time.
He came back one...